Questions or doubts.
Yeah.
Meeting has last told up.
Zoom. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we use it to record the meeting.
Good. And when I'm sorry, right? And she could. This Carrie being excused and.
Planning work for this evening?
Don Span. Carrie Bigford appears to be absent. Ronald Lissar.
Present.
Larry Grant. Tim Dunham has been excused. Scott Libby.
Present.
Andrew. Just those two, Bigman and Dunham. Yeah.
Good, thank you. On the minutes, I don't think. Most everyone hasn't seen. Didn't get a copy. Okay, so. We can, I think we'll just table. Meeting. Uh, but like we talked earlier, it sounds like they have a distribution problem. Didn't get the minutes and then. I didn't get all of them. The other thing, um, before we. Move into. Sketch review. Scott will be sharing that. A couple of things, one is. Tim Dunham and I went. Planning. Workshop for training session. Back with a few things. That was Sky. Town manager. There's some indication that the board may need to. Individual boy, I say individual. Boya training for each board member. Sorry, this isn't a requirement. It is a requirement. Officials. Then that. This board is considered to be quasi judicial for. Board members here may need to. Just for clarification on that. Came up in that discussion. Or. Being there was one and a half hours, so we took one for you guys. There was a discussion. About having alternates. The town manager to talk. And let the board and. Yeah, for us. Uh, typically, I don't think we have many time. Wrong, but it's actually a good thing to think about. Again, there was one other thing that.
Executive sessions.
Yeah, executive sessions. Uh, I don't think we've ever went into an executive session, I can. Not sure that we would really typically desperate. They're dealing with personnelship and that type of stuff. So I don't know that we. I guess I put it on the table that. We practice that. If it were able to come up. Was needed. Um, and that would be it. You want to say anything about Boya? We're using on emails and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, if I'm say just.
And Chris, we're not trying to hijack your, your time, but.
Um, so I just. Really heard and such, um, I, I don't think we have a real issue with anything in relation to that. We're gonna double check. Your training, but what we're seeing thus far. Dawn's point. Would be the thing that is plenty more explicitly called out, um, but we're. Not just explicitly stating what I'm gonna say to you would be at least a very good start to this, that, um, you're not. Each other outside of official meetings, really, like if it's more than two people, it can be considered. Um, properly advertised meeting, so, um, one thing that. With that is like an accidental reply all to if Josh sends you memos and you have, you know, you're not gonna. Thoughts. So we're gonna try to move to using the B C C, so that can't really happen, um. Just like an extra layer of protection, I think. You guys know that, I don't think there's been many issues. If there have been any issues, we've. Talked about them and gotten through them, we'll look into making sure. Training, but just basically the, um, being aware of speaking and ask for them to. Consider an unadvertised meeting and then we're just, that cannot happen, so. I'll take, we're just gonna set that up there.
Thank you, and the. Thing about the mail is that if you end up, it goes to more person. I don't think we run into an issue, but certainly good.
Julie, let me know, I shouldn't do that.
So, alright, so.
Someone's getting. Someone's just not getting the.
Well, so you can't reply to. Yeah, so. Now I'm received. Stat, if you would please.
Alright. The next item on the agenda is site plan. Uh, sketch review for Thompson. Village Drive. Uh, central Thompson Associates to. Construct the new two to three story professional office within with. On Village Drive tax map, R zero four Y eighteen A.
My name is Chris Blander, presenting the top. On their facility. They're proposing a housing rate. Here is for you. Den Arts, Thompson Main, it's off Village Drive, lot C eight, it's, yeah, just. Uh, tax number four, lot eighteen A, it's the size. I mean, eighteen acres, it's. Are proposing a new den lot. Uh, footprint's about ten thousand five hundred square feet plus or minus. Story, we have a first floor dentist office, then we'll have a basement floor. The dentist's office will take over half that space and they'll have tenant space. Available on the other side. The site is currently undeveloped, there's no weapons on site. That's some. Uh, polyintimacy nipples will purchase the lot and develop a park. The park is currently owned by Central Thompson Associates Two LLC. Uh, Green. The park is part of PC. Green, so it's part of the planning commercial development. As such, the condition used permanent. Wired, uh, as confirmed by the code office. Gain the twenty foot setback and buffer along Route one ninety six if required, uh, unless. Through by the codes, so we'll get it solved. Front. Will be built drive in this case, while the single paved access connecting to the road. Distance at the entrance is greater than four hundred feet, is a twenty five mile per hour. Uh, site distance is two hundred fifty feet required. More than that. It's not a problem on this side. Approximately, they expect them to fit the employee. Thirty six medical staff in thirty treatment rooms. Four tenants based on basement level, uh, will be rented out to an office. You serve professional. That maybe it's coincide with some dental. Uh, you wanted me to make sure that you understand, you have some. On the building itself. Uh, they want to make sure that it's illuminated, so you're here. This is the site plan that we submitted. We did go through a staff review last week or the week before. They. Did we smooth? They, a couple of things to iron out, one of them was sidewalk. Cross, crossing Village Drive. We initially had it on the south side. And it was crossing at the turn around type area. Through, uh, staffed in. They think that was a good idea, so we opted to. Side the entrance, uh, which makes a cleaner access at crosswalk. Other than that, the plan that we submitted. This is a little bit more. Advanced than the plan you saw in. But it's relatively the same layout and the building size has changed. I lay up, it's pretty much. I do have. Four planes, Darren Architects is working on that for us. I'll give you a scene. For what they're thinking the building is gonna look like. Top left is the front elevation facing Village Drive. Below it, and there's a two sides. The one with the brick wall. Nine six sides. And the slope version is riding down the park. Yep. It's a perspective. And you see the Thompson Den Parks logo at the, at the. And they kind of like to illuminate that. This is the topo survey that this survey has done. Show that. Some pictures along the road, you guys. It, it looks the same. This is Village Drive. This is the landscape. This thing along the front. This is looking up the hills or. Uh, and that's really all I wanted to show you. We have five way to request, uh, that we'll try to outline for you here. Basically, two two five, yes, twenty seven G, numbers two, three and four. Basically dealing with. Two two twenty five, two two five, twenty seven. The parking along the front of Village Drive, I hope to get a waiver from them. Uh, we discussed is that the previous sketch and I had thought that we was on board. From that today again. Five, yes, twenty seven G three. Is it requires a sidewalk from the parking area too. But it also requires a planting strip. Uh, we wanna have a. Waiver from the planting strip full installs. Five, yes, two seven, point seven G four. Requires a. Along the front of the road. And we're requesting waiver because again, building. The side, had sidewalk already. Uh, we're hoping to tie into that, some. Rarely used or not, it's not used a lot, it's not in. The highway itself is a. Mechanism to do that, so the closest half. Vince is about a mile. If the sidewalk is. Uh, and it's available. So what I open is a request waiver from that. Item four, one seventy five, yes, ten, A two. Of all the existing boards, have trees on site, uh, the site. Area, um. The development is really. High big parks, we're really using up most of the site, so areas within. Won't be able to be saved, there's fledge and because. Just we have, uh, so we're hoping we can get a waiver locating every tree. And number five. Talks about one. To be planted every fourteen spaces. Our development site, you know. Basically, most of the parking in the front is. In spaces on each side. All the parking in the back is also less than fourteen. Side, the only place that we would have island is along the power line. People on that side. And we're hoping, uh, to keep that space at. Base and to allow me these guys to just push the snow towards the back. The island, you're speaking a little complicated, so in the first particular site. Were in one island and we're hoping to. Those are the five waivers. I can go through it in more detail, but if you want to discuss it.
Yeah, why don't we discuss the waivers first, uh, you guys have any question? Um, yeah. From what is that meeting, just when we first saw this, I wanted to look at this, but. You know. For me, I can't speak for the whole board, you know, I think as far as the, the parking. It's, it's, it's in line with. The, yes, Village Drive is the, the entrance, but really you've got one ninety. It's been pretty well landscaped on the Village side, I think it's something we've probably worked with this. The landscaping is. Up to what's promised here. Of course, okay, um.
I will say too, we did set the. So the edge of the park line is sixty feet from the edge.
Like, oh, for Village Drive. Um, I do wonder. Uh, not happening, the buffer between sidewalk and the drive. Um, cause they, it, most of the Highlands has. On that sidewalk, so it's kind of fitting with what's there. And now we provide enough. Some more landscaping over there, um.
I will say. Between the road and the park area and on that top side, I'm in. So adding another four foot, that's not just worse than that, I'm not saying we. That's why.
As far as sort of, uh, sidewalk on that side of Village Drive. Yeah. There's one on the other side, I think that's one, at least one of the criteria is that there's. That it's, uh, ready and able to use and, and I think the number of the. And, uh, about the side, the crosswalk are, are things that you'll. Rest as far as signage. Yes. You know, the, the blinking yellow. Crosswalk signs or something to, to make that, uh, helpful, or someone who thinks it. Crosswalk was one, some ones.
Well, I guess we're having a discussion when this product was. Hopefully alleviating that, but we'll.
Um. And then as far as the, uh, the one seventy five, ten. It, it goes back and forth to the text. In the, the, the sketch frame proposal, yeah. Obviously, you, you don't want to do it for the whole property. Yeah, that's like. It goes back and forth as to what you're gonna do with that twenty foot buffer, whether. We're going to do a, um. The process. Measuring the trees, removing twenty percent or.
Well. The one who was, let's preserve the twenty foot setback as much as we can. Really needed to see, see the building, have people on the highways. So I suspect that it want to take some of the trees up. To twenty percent, but maybe ten percent, just to get a little bit more visual. So that's really what he's concerned about, and we're kind of hoping that that could be a. Proven if both will propose to keep it as a buffer in. Unless I provide a inventory of the trees in that. And then we'll decide what we can take and hoping that could be a condition of approval. They decide.
And, and given the, the. Quest to waive the, the one.
Yeah.
I assume the other. White areas around the electric tree parking lots are going to be landscaped. A little bump out by the building, the two on each side, the one to the east. Hollowing. You know, you know, you. It's, it seems reasonable for this project, you know, others, um, you know, the, the medical building. Hey, that's the islands, they seem to do okay with. Um, so, you know. To, to consider it. Maybe. There, I, I know they'll want to be able to see the building. Uh, but depending on the. You know. Maybe the lens, you know, if. You're for the land, uh, losing that island of landscaping, striving maybe. Trees, but those trees someplace else, uh, increase the rest of the energy, yes, um. That ends up being a condition of, um, the waiver or not, but. Try and do that, um. You know, and, and when you do do the inventory. Many, I mean. The twenty percent obviously gonna be just south of the blues. Um, it's, you know.
See his logo, you know, like. In the back, maybe there's a score.
So it's just, you know, for us to know it's not. Contributed, but those old farm, it's just the big tall trees, so, yeah.
Right.
For this. He's the red print ability. So just, uh, just we know that, uh. Alright, that was my piece of waivers, excellent waivers. Do you want to step through some of the comments, um? From. The town staff or if you have questions specific to something about.
I got a couple of questions, Chris, uh, on the, on this. The. I think the blue on the line is far. Yes, sir. So heading toward one ninety six. Four, yeah, yeah, is state. Oh, the blue line is state, is state, so you, uh, the blue one. The state highway, right.
Right, roughly the top of the bank, top of the bank area.
Okay, and looking until the elevations, it looks like we're, um. Into the bank or some of the bank, so I'm backseat filling up.
All, yeah, along that line, so I'm coming up the hill from Village Drive. Had a pretty good click, then I'm coming up at three percent or four percent. The door. And then I'm gonna take. In a basement level door. Back ten feet below that, so. I brought it up. Thing so I could match the grade back.
Oh, so some of the building is gonna be such a. Ready, finished for you.
Is that what, give me a daylight walkout. I mean, yes, be fit, not in the back. Like in the front, I'm ten feet. So if I'm in, probably three feet up there. What's there?
And, uh, Chris. Um, does the sidewalk on the opposite side of your frontage? And just out of curiosity, what's the yellow? Watching it now.
At the corner, the corner best existing high green sign. Uh, okay. On this frosty for landscaping inside.
Any. I can't remember what the. Any possibility of adding to that sign in this? Biden sign?
Uh, I never thought of that. Honestly, uh, we, we were proposing. At the Roman sign, uh, on the north side of that entrance and maybe embedded in that. You know, we've discussed.
And you're talking. On the building.
Oh, right, it's, so each, each facade will have a small. Den Arts logo there, uh, so, yeah.
I'll control into this. Those are the three Thompson Devil Arts on Forside. Move over to here, um.
I know we intend to keep road. I assume probably me and Tim will move their stuff. This new facility, and then they'll run down. Yeah, the space, you have the dentist.
The employees, so.
Right, so maybe the max frequency size them. It will, yeah. It's probably three times what they have.
And, uh. I like, I. More planned, but. Uh, but looking at, uh, one of the other, at least one.
What in the basement would be half, half or space. added to a tenant or somebody beyond the Den Parks. For half the space in the basement of the shower. Science.
Probably just a two ten type building.
I'm sorry, two ten type, oh, yes.
Let's hold ours for the moment. Um, you, uh. I mean, you were talking about the crosswalk. Then I'd rather see, uh. Flashing lights than.
Okay. I'll try to figure out. Come on the flashing lights soon. Press the button and people know your resources, so.
Just curious, that, does that connect to?
So there's a solar project on there, is.
Yes.
There are a lot of these down here now, uh, so they've got their own moves.
I'm just kidding about the.
But you're gonna put in a speed table, put it at the cross.
Yeah, I prefer not to have one coming down, I'll send them to trouble. One time, kind of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And one, one of them, one of them's the highest. Well, they catch it, yeah.
Not ruined season.
The others?
Um, yeah, a couple of comments, um, the rating was one of the things that caught my eye when I first looked at the plan. It looks like the parking area is pretty steep, like it's a, it's a pretty good rating.
The front is relatively flat, I said, on the side, it's a five. You're coming down, I gotta, I gotta make up ten feet somehow, so, but like. ADA entrance in the front and ADA entrance in the back, so the tree. Yeah. Take him watch.
Um, I appreciate. The look of the buildings, um, pretty views, which look great. Uh, it looks to me like it's well designed, it's fitting. Free with the area. Um, I did see some windows on the second floor, so they're actually a four above first floor.
There is a, a. Three of floor above the first floor, I don't know if it's usable, but it may be usable.
So it's like it would be funny to do it up there for more space.
I am. I don't know if they'll be using it for dental. Sure, there will be an.
So. A whole question is based on some of the staff comments, oh, so are they buying? There's a, the, the lot to the east, um. When I was reading in here, it was a little confusing, says, you know, they're also selling. Tops of dent parks, let's talk about it, or, or is it?
Oh, lots. Only selling one.
And so to. That is Tom Saucy's comment about the, the, the water. Spreader, whatever we're calling that.
Yeah, I've been talking with the owner and. The couch as we speak, this was part of Highland Green and we had. This area was between the power line and the highway, so it's really tossed it. But all together is Highland Green, we're meant to predeveloped floor. If he's gonna make me need that property line, I don't know that I can. Be in the predeveloped levels at that spot, but if we own, if. To the east and I can get an easement to add clothes perhaps. I still need to work it out with Tom. What exactly is gonna happen? But we do, Highland Green owns that park to the east, I would say. Seven acres, five acres in conservation, so there. Between our site and the conservation area where I thought. Well, years ago, but we moved on to better things, so there's a section. That's not. So the only people. Would be able to use it would be the dent, so maybe they buy that from him?
Just, I mean, the primary thing is. To deal with whatever the flow issues that he's.
In, in my opinion, we need pretty. The overall project, if I could, we did had a more concise area right there, I have a couple after you with two.
And, um. Still, you know, you'll be having like. First, the store purchase from removal, uh, so brought up a question in, in our memo, it says, um, noted the some. Flow towards, so the, the eastern portion is kind of what we're saying.
Yeah, well, you just push somewhere I can find places to push them, they prefer not, for me not. To build a, of a landscaping that's there, makes perfect sense, so. They're putting a curve there, so it runs off to a basin and stays out of that here. And maybe I gotta push snow towards, uh, towards the. CMP power line, so that's another reason not to have an island so I can. Snow over and down.
I assume that even parking in CMP, you know, there'll, there'll be landscaping there, you don't. Necessarily the, the, the CMP line from, you know, your. But you're gonna be kind of buffering. Not gonna look at the. It's all gonna be one of them, that's good.
Wait, we should guess we're getting grade, uh, with. The line on our side, uh, there's vegetation, be one of the CMP's up. But, yeah, we weren't looking to buffer from CMP in this case.
And, and my last thought was just because it, uh, was interesting, Stuart's comment. The sewage conveyance was a bit different than what is typical. What was, what do you mean by?
Honestly, I don't know what you mean, but we, we were out there this morning and we opened that. Where I'm connecting to for us, I can verify that it was there, it's full of water, so. We're gonna look at it again, but there shouldn't be a force main stuff. At the entrance that we can connect to, and as that force main travel. Up Village Drive about four hundred feet to a rapid sewer main hall, so. And the dentist office is the only use on it. The lesson, so, or.
So, I, I, I don't know, do you have any questions, things that you wanted to get out of this?
So, to the. Right of the. Towards the eastern one. Uh, that's the, that's the second part of the soul, but. I think which is in conservation, right, two is not, I. By this development of. Then make this a land lock. Well, there's landlocked already, we moved. Years ago, within highway. Yeah, so. Whatever was there is what we purchased, uh, so it was already landlocked. That's Highland Green. But if you have the oldest parks, right, I bring them. With them, yes, we sit here right. Right against this land, yeah. So what is, uh. First. What is going to impress, if somebody wants to, somebody else purchases that up. Parcel and. There is no exit through there, you're gonna be back here. And it's not gonna be a road to tops of devil arcs.
I would say that that's really not gonna be possible. It's landlocked parcel, it's mostly wetland and the five acres that's in conservation. There's a section, uh, next to this site, uh. Fifty to a hundred feet wide, no more than that, uh, that's available. Dentist's office ever wanted to expand a parking or do something on those. Have a second site, uh, with a separate building in a separate. In that shore. So either the developer at Highland Green has got. Ten, at five acres in conservation, and he owns two extra acres. And he couldn't sell it to the dental people, he could take that to a. And then you put it in conservation for an impact somewhere else on site. So he won't be selling it. Or it's always set.
You have a question? All right, well, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Did you return or you take a question? Hello, no German? All in favor? Show it to you then, yes.
I mean, Chris, thanks, uh, I think.